I'd like to call the evening session of the June 2, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Welcome everyone who is here this evening. Good to see you here. Also welcome those who are tuning in on our live stream on YouTube. Welcome to you as well. This morning, we opened with invocation and a pledge, and we will not repeat that tonight, but just know that we did that this morning. And then also wanted to mention our six board priorities, most of which will be land use tonight. But there we go. We have a new graphic there on the screen. And those six priorities are infrastructure, education funding, public safety, financial stewardship, land use, and our county employees. So with that, I do have a couple of announcements. We had several appointments to boards that we had to complete our ballots this morning, and I will try to go through these as quickly as I can. For the Board of Equalization and Review, Dr. Shaquita Blue was appointed for a four-year term, and Chief Lee Franks was appointed to fill an unexpired term that ends June 30 of 2028. Lynn Ragsdale was appointed to the Johnston County Board, Johnston Community College Board of Trustees. Tom Turnage was appointed to the Johnston County Jury Commission. He does require a waiver in the length of service policy. Johnston Lee Harnett, Community Action. Lexa Walker was appointed. And for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, from the general public, we had Jackie Holloman Lee, James Spencer, Douglas Wayne Sorrell, and Vonda Martin Jenkins were appointed. Mr. Sorrell will require a waiver in the length of service policy. And then for specific positions, we had a member of the community, Faith Community, Dr. Dunston was appointed to that. LaBeatrice Solomon was appointed from a nonprofit agency, and Tawanda Garner was appointed for substance abuse professional. And the Library Board of Trustees, we had Martha Mills and Donna Daughtry were appointed. And to the LEPC, which is Local Emergency Planning Committee, we had Steve Strickland, Todd Ramsey, Beth Stewart, and Marie Rogers appointed there. And do we need a motion to formally make that happen? Okay. All right. So those were the appointments that were made for ballots this morning, and I will move on now to approval of tonight's agenda. Any items that need to be changed for that?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agenda as presented.
My second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. It is approved. Next, we have a visit from Cameron Hollowell, Miss North Carolina's Teen 2024. So welcome, Ms. Hollowell. How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing tonight?
Good.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. My name is Cameron Hollowell, and I am pleased to serve as your Miss North Carolina's Teen 2024. I'm a native of Clayton and have grown up in the Johnston County Public School System. I attended West Clayton Elementary, Clayton Middle, and in the fall, I will start my senior year of high school at Corinth Holders High School. And thanks to the Career and College Promise Program, I also will be working on my Associate's in Arts degree at Johnston Community College and while I'm completing my high school diploma. I'm so blessed to represent the Tar Heel State within the Miss America Opportunity, which is the largest scholarship provider to young women in the nation. Because of Miss America, after high school, I will have the decision to continue my educational journey by accepting a full ride to either the University of Alabama or Mississippi State University. Thanks to the Miss North Carolina Organization, I also have earned over $9,000 in cash scholarships to use towards my educational dreams. I'm extremely grateful, as an aspiring physical therapist, for the Career and College Promise Program and the Miss America Opportunity for allowing me to reach my educational dreams at a lower financial debt. This year, I've also been able to share my community service initiative across the state. Project Purple, a personal initiative I started nearly a decade ago, advocates for patients living with Crohn's disease and ulcerative colitis. Throughout my advocacy, I've been able to partner with local chapters of the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation in North Carolina, South Carolina, Texas, Florida, and California, as well as working alongside their national marketing team. I've been able to raise over $7,500 towards research and funding for inflammatory bowel disease patients, and I continue to share those stories of patients just like my mother. I've been so fortunate to give back to the state in many ways, whether through classroom visits to inspire the youth, through community service events to give back, or even serving as a house page for the North Carolina House of Representatives back in March. I'm so proud to be from Johnston County, and I hope I've been a role model to my community this year. With only three weeks until my reign is over and I crown my successor, I am so grateful to have been able to share the North Carolina hospitality with six states while completing nearly 150 appearances and traveling over 20,000 miles. I want to thank you all once again for allowing me the chance to speak and share my passions with you tonight, and I thank you all for continually serving your community and allowing me and giving back to Johnstonians just like me. Thank you for encouraging our youth to dream big, live boldly, and speak loudly so they may succeed as well. Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
I congratulate you on your hard work.
Thank you.
It looks like you've earned those scholarships. My son has Crohn's, so I thank you for what you're doing in that regard.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we need a picture?
Oh, yep. Yep. Sure. I was getting ready to ask. We hadn't had any pictures, did we?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Will we see you compete as a Miss one day?
Possibly, after my freshman year of college.
All right. Next up, we have public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here for public comment on an item that is not on the agenda? All right. And Madam Clerk, we didn't receive any emails this afternoon. Okay. Then we will move on. We have a public hearing, a special use hearing actually, on case 2107. It's a modification. I will open that special use hearing and call on our deputy clerk to swear anyone wishing to speak, they would come forward. Are you going to come forward or stand where they are? Yeah, this is your part. I'll let you decide. I would say even if you think you might want to speak, go ahead and be sworn in and you'll have.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Newton, if you would, present the case background for us.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. So this case, special use case 21-07, this is a modification of an existing special use permit associated with property at 8817 Cleveland Road in the McMoore Township. The current zoning is general business, special use district, or now would be actually a conditional zoning district. And the request is coming from the applicant of Lisa Newby, and the request is to add the uses as listed there in your staff report, and these include catering, food prep, food sales and services, and all of this just to be added to that existing special use permit. If you'll notice in, I believe on the last page, you can see that there is a commercial building already on the property, so it is an existing structure. There would be no additional improvements to the property. And with regard to our land use plan, this area is noted as a neighborhood center when designated as medium density residential place type in envisioned Johnston. Staff does, staff did have this on the planning board's agenda for a forum, as normal with any quasi judicial matter, specifically special use. Planning Board hears those or provides a forum in special use cases, but they do not make a recommendation. So you will not see a recommendation on your staff report there. In addition, we have provided for you a special use, the special use conditions that were, that are being added, requested to be added to the existing special use. And also, we have listed there for you the four findings of fact for your reference. And these four findings of fact are for the applicant to essentially prove to the board or describe to the board why they think they're entitled to this permit, so they, so they will. You can essentially ask them if they understand those findings of fact and how they intend on meeting those findings of fact. Glad to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? I guess my general question, what are activities or what's approved in the current modification? Is that, I didn't?
So they currently, what's approved currently is, so they have business office and several other uses. It was, it was a, I'm not going to say it's a loan list, but there is a laundry list.
Okay.
But it's mostly commercial, low intensity commercial, very little traffic generation or need for traffic generation there. And I think in this case, because you're, with the catering, food prep, and sales, we're not talking about a dining or restaurant, a dining and restaurant in this situation. So it kind of fits the, it fits the bill for the use or for the building and the functionality of the building there. We will not create any additional driveways, driveway cuts to Cleveland Road, extremely low traffic generator, those types of things.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Newton? All right. Thank you. Thank you. And now it's time to hear from applicant. So, Ms. Newby, if you have some information you want to provide to us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm very excited to be here with you this evening, and thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. It's my first time here, in case you couldn't tell, so very excited. My name is Lisa Newby, and I'm a classically trained French chef, and I was educated at the prestigious La Cordon Bleu School of Culinary Arts. I have spent the last 17 years honing my craft, and I cannot wait to bring this to the Cleveland area, which is also my home. Everyday Gourmet is the name of my business, and I am looking to rezone that property at 8817 Cleveland Road and Suite B to provide room for Everyday Gourmet to do what we do best: Let's Cook! I'm here to answer that age-old question of what's for dinner? Everyday Gourmet will provide our community with grab-and-go style family meals that are fresh and locally sourced when available. They're free of junk ingredients that no one can pronounce, and they're incredibly delicious. I'm going to help families bring dinner back to the table, whether choosing our take-and-bake options that you can put inside the oven at your home, or something quick that you can just pop in the microwave. We've got plenty for everyone. This facility will be outfitted with a storefront and a commercial kitchen to benefit our local Cleveland community, to handle catering needs for Johnston County and beyond, and who knows where we'll go from there. I want to thank you for your time this evening and consideration for bringing Everyday Gourmet, where culinary creations come home, home to my community, and then to your table. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Before you step back, so, and I guess, do we don't have the four findings of fact? Have you got those? Ah, there we go.
They're right here. They're on our table.
On ours, but does she have those? I can read them if I need to. So I was going to say, if you would take a look at those, and these aren't really any different from what the first time it was approved, but I would just say, if you look at those, and would it be your testimony that your, your plan is consistent with those four finding of facts? Yeah, if you can get it up there, that would be, I think two on one side. Look at that. Oh, there's a wheel. There's a way to get them up there. There we go. That works. Oh, oh.
This is, yes, this is true.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Very good. Thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. I appreciate your positive energy.
Yeah, yeah. I was actually talking about having, we had a long morning, so thank you for bringing some energy here. Some positive energy.
I felt like I was on Shark Tank.
That's exactly what I thought.
That's exactly what I thought.
That's pretty cool.
All right. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? All right. If not, I will close the public discussion portion, and Mr. Newton, I will ask you to come back up and summarize things for us.
Yes, sir. As it relates to case 21-07 modification, as stated earlier, planning board does not provide a recommendation. However, staff does recommend, does recommend approval based on the consistency with the original special use permit and its intended functionalities.
All right. Any final questions for Mr. Newton?
One question. I know with, I'm not saying this is related, but food trucks need like a commissary. Is this, would this fit under that type definition for, available as a commissary?
So they could potentially, it's probably a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but yes, I think they could potentially, if they were to get into the food truck presence and do the mobile food unit, they could use this as a base of operations for that, for a commissary. That is simply nothing more than just having a grated kitchen to prep those meals and to send those out. Obviously, truck would have additional inspections and permit issues as well.
So let me follow up on that. Is that, when I look at our council, is that something we need to add as a potential item on there, just in case?
You certainly could. I think it's covered by food prep, food sales, but you could add food truck, just to be sure. But I do think that that would be covered.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Newton. So I will close the special use hearing and turn it over to the board for their discussion and our motion.
Chairman, I make a motion based on finding the fact that the special use conditions, I move for approval of the special use permit modification.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Let me, let me go. Do we need to, do we need to, did you read the actual? Okay. All right. Sorry, I was looking at what I was going to say next. Okay. All those, yeah, so we're, so we're all those in favor.
You saw the words, I had to do it.
Please say aye.
Aye.
We're good.
All right. Yeah, we are good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're free to go. Yeah, you don't, you don't have to stay. We don't make you stay for the whole meeting. Yeah.
But you can.
But you can, with your energy.
Meal seat.
She's got dinner to make.
All right. The next item is proposed road change, and Braxton, you going to present that to us as well?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. As you recall from May 19 meeting, you did table consideration of this one, one service road in the Wilsons Mills area, and this would be coming off of Wilsons Mills Road on the south, south side of the US 70 or I future, I 42 or I 42 highway. So at, at that meeting, in that memo, we did discuss, there was a proposal from Town Wilsons Mills to name this service road Captain Drive, and you took that under advisement, and you delayed any action on that till this meeting. You did satisfy the public hearing requirement as per general statute and did receive feedback from community members as well during that May 19 meeting as well. You closed that public hearing, and you asked us to bring back some possible names for this service road. So what staff has done is, staff has looked at the geography of the area and tried to tie it back to the geography. So what we came up with, where we have three proposed, or three recommendations for names. The first is Middle Branch Road, the second is Poplar Creek Road, and the third is Three Branch Road. How we came to that was, in that area, there is Poplar Creek, which is to the south and west of this property, and it's only about a half a mile in linear distance. So that was there, that explains Poplar Creek. There's also a kind of a trotted shaped tributary that feeds into Noose River, that actually feeds into the bend, that major bend at Noose River near the correctional facility. And this is, in that trotted, the middle branch actually comes through and into a portion of this area. So that's how we came up with Middle Branch. And then the third was Three Branch, because once again, it's a, it's a tributary that is a, that has three fingers or three, three prongs to it. So that was our Three, Three Branch Road. These are, these are your options. Your, your, tonight, you can, you have, once again, you have fulfilled the requirement for the public hearing. You can simply take this under advisement, or you can act on it and leading, going forward. If you do act on it, we will bring back, from the previous meeting as well, we will bring back an ordinance to you that you can, that will be on consent agenda at a future date, and that really makes this, these namings official. Not to say they're not official by a proper vote, motion and vote, but that's one thing we do have to do, is we do have to give you the ordinance to tie all that together. At any rate, that's what we have for you this evening for consideration on this road naming.
So, and just for the public, we had two alternates presented at the last meeting. One was Edwards something.
One was Jack Edwards Road. And then the other was, I think it was Greater Vision Outreach Church or Center or something of that nature, it's a place of worship that is on this service road, is access from this service road. Looking at, for the Jack Edwards Road, looking at our current database, Edwards is a common usage for roads in Johnston County, both roads and streets in Johnston County, and we just did not feel like it's in accordance with the ordinance as it sounds, sounds like or similar to, very similar to, too closely similar to other roads in the community. Jack Edwards proper would, and of course, with the county's policy, naming roads after individuals should be those that have, should be named after historical figures. So if they've got some, some noted history and contribution to local, to local history, then we can use those, but that's been extremely infrequent within the county. So this is where, this is where we settle.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Newton? And tonight, you, you don't need a motion to approve, but with just some consensus of the board for a name, and you'll bring that back to us for, with a final resolution, or do you need a motion tonight?
We, we, we can do the motion at any time. If you do so tonight, we'll just bring back the ordinance, and that'll be placed on the, that'll be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. What are the wishes of the board?
What's something everybody can get behind?
Well, I think the, going with the geographic thing would make the most sense, and Middle Branch seemed to be reasonable to me. I don't know what the wishes of the rest of the board are, but.
I don't have a strong opinion, but that sounds reasonable. There's no other Middle Branch somewhere else that's a problem with 911, is there?
No, sir. There's nothing in our database that currently conflicts with Middle Branch. We do have another, we have a Middle Creek, but not a Middle Branch, and that's distinctively different, and that's keeps us from being "sounds like," which is what we're most concerned about from when we're dispatching emergency services.
Middle Branch or Middle Ranch, you wouldn't want that.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments?
I just would like to appreciate staff in looking into all of this. I know there was lots of difference of opinions last time, as well as like different, went into research of 911, as well as with emergency services of the different names, and so I appreciate all of staff's time and effort into trying to come up with different name options. It's not very often where I feel like we're able to give a road a name, and so there's a lot that goes into, goes into it. So thank you for your time and your efforts in being able to try to cover all different situations and scenarios, as well as options. I really appreciate that. I do think we need to go ahead, though, and make it so then that way, emergency services and 911 does have a road and a name, that way they can respond to individuals that are in need.
All right.
So, therefore, I move to name the road for Wilsons Mills, Middle Branch Road.
Have a second on that?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? All right.
Can you tell me where the other Edwards roads, you said there were other roads with the name of Edwards. Can you tell me where they are in Johnston County?
Not offhand, but when we ran it through our database, we came up with two or three additional Edwards, they were either Edwards Road, Edwards Quarter, Edwards Drive.
There's one in Willis Springs, Princeton.
There's one in Princeton for sure.
Yeah, there's four different in Princeton.
Okay.
That was just a quick county search to elevate your question.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of naming the road, Middle Branch Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. All right. Next up, we have management report and comments. Okay. All right. Board reports and comments, and, I'll start with you. Last chair Harris, I'll start with you again.
That's right. I don't have anything additional other than just, you know, our condolences to the Lee family from Marlin Lee, the commissioner, I know we were a councilman, we brought that up this morning, and so just keep his family and your thoughts and prayers, and appreciate the staff and all the work that's gone into the budget and so forth. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. Thank you.
Commissioner Rose?
I would just like to say, we, you know, we did hear this morning from a lady upset about maybe our budgeting process, but I would just like to say, I welcome all of the people who have a question or don't, don't understand fully what, what the process is, because I think that is the, the more the questions we get, the more people ask us why things are as they are, we're able to explain those things. So I just want people to know that they are welcome at any time to ask any of us questions about how things are working, and we will be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
I would just like to also echo Commissioner Rose, as well as Patrick, Commissioner Harris too, as well of, thank you for staff, as well as all the department heads. I know it also takes a lot for all department heads as well to be gathering information for budget, and as we move forward into the next month of everything that goes into those decision makings that we have to do.
Commissioner Stubble?
Have nothing else to note.
Commissioner Garland?
Yeah, I've got something to say, and I hope it's not taken in the wrong way, because it's, it can be a sensitive area that we've seen a lot of observances of loved people who's passed away. For 10 years, no, for 12 years now, I've worked and really interested in trying to curtail the trash we have alongside of our road, trying to make it easier for people to get rid of the trash, take it where it belongs, that sort of thing. And I've noticed on TV, especially in Wake County, in larger areas, where when a, when a person passes away, there's a ceremony to release balloons in the air. And I'm sensitive to what they're trying to do to honor that person, but 100% of those balloons wind up being trashed somewhere, along the roadside, in our, in private land, in the woods, and they don't biodegrade. I mean, they're there for centuries. And I would just hope that people can evolve to some other way to show their love and respect in the memory of their loved ones without putting trash out on the roads, and that's where it winds up being. So I just throw that out as a public comment. Let's not have balloon releases, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that?
Yes, sir.
Not only is it trash, but it presents a hazard to wildlife and livestock. They can swallow these balloons and choke on them, which unfortunately happens quite frequently. So.
And I would just hope that people can evolve to some other way to show their love and respect in the memory of their loved ones without putting trash out on the roads, and, and that's where it winds up being. So I'll just throw that out as a public comment. Let's not have balloon releases, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that?
Yes, sir.
Not only is it trash, but it presents a hazard to wildlife and livestock. They can swallow these balloons and choke on them, which unfortunately happens quite frequently. So that's another reason to try to keep these balloons out of the environment.
All right. And I actually think we have received emails on that in the past, so there's some potential for, if we choose to, to take some action there, as far as that goes, so. All right. And then a couple of things, just a reminder, we had, did have the, the public hearing this morning on the budget. We have two more opportunities for public input on that. One is this coming Monday at 6:00 here in the boardroom, and then on the 16th, we will also have another session in the evening for a chance there, and that will hopefully be the meeting that we adopt our budget. I know we have a lot of work to do. We discussed this morning the fact that we have the manager's budget recommendation, and it's just that a budget recommendation, and this board is going to do the heavy lifting to get to that final budget. And so that has work still to be done, so as, I think it's Ms. Sholton this morning was here to discuss some of the things, a lot of those things we're taking under consideration. There's several people, I think has been mentioned earlier, that have these same concerns, and ours is to figure out what that balance between making sure the taxpayers are not unduly burdened with taxes, but also being able to provide the services that the people in Johnston County require, so. But with that, that's all I have this evening, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move with adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1742.15]